Call back to order the open session of the nine August twenty-two. When a select board meeting at six thirty-three. Um, this is a recorded Zoom event, roll call vote, uh, select board members in attendance are Gary Cheeseman.
Peter Clay.
And so we have a full quorum. Also, attendance is um, Steve Willis, our town administrator and recording secretary Catherine Tinsley. All right, so as usual, we'll start off with any public inputs. If you'd like to speak, uh, hand up and uh, we'll get in here for two minutes. And before we start, those that aren't on mute, please mute because we're getting background interference here. All right. So, uh, Steve, do you have the sequence of those hands up there? So I saw Rick Woodland.
I believe Rick Woodland, then Susan Maylin, and uh, looks like the third, and then Michelle Bailey.
Right. So, uh, Rick, if you would, uh, introduce yourself, state your, uh, uh, address and the subject upon which you'd like to speak for two minutes.
Sure, this is, uh, Rick Woodland, twenty-six Maple Street, Wenham. I actually, uh, will spend my two minutes on two points. Point number one, I'd like an update on the executive committee minutes from two thousand and twenty-one, I think, and two thousand and twenty, who were, which were posted and then removed for redaction. It seems like a simple redaction that could have been reposted. I didn't check yesterday or today, so maybe they have been, so excuse me if I'm late to the game. But, uh, there shouldn't be any substantive changes, just the request of, uh, Ms. Tinsley to have her name, uh, struck. So, number one, number two, uh, I'd like to know what the status is of having a townwide, uh, public forum to discuss how the ARPA funds will be spent. Those are my two points that I hope the select board could at some point give a status.
All right, thank you. Susan, you're up next then.
Okay, thank you, and, um, happy summer, everybody. Um, um, my understanding right now is that the select board is the sole entity making the decisions on how to spend the ARPA funds. Is that correct?
The, uh, funds go to the executive authority in the particular town or city. So yes, the select board controls the ARPA funds.
Okay, and I, I would hope as a taxpayer citizen, active in the community, that the community would have some participation or say in the expenditure of those funds.
All right, anything else, Susan?
Well, what's, what's, I mean, why wouldn't you want that, that input?
We, we haven't, this is open, public input, so it's your speech, not our response.
Okay, thanks.
All right. And Michelle?
Hi, Michelle Bailey, two Remington Road. Um, I was wanting to ask, um, if you were going to be giving us any update about what the visit to the iron rail was actually about, um, and what you may have seen there. And also, I am interested in knowing when those minutes are going to be made available, since it has been a significant amount of time since those meetings were held, a significant amount of time since the issue was settled, and actually a significant amount of time since you have voted to release the minutes. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anybody else?
I do not see any additional hands.
All right. So I think the, uh, one question we might just make a comment, Steve, that there is a executive session we're posting for Thursday, is that correct?
Yes, that is correct.
All right. Thanks, concerning the minutes. Oh, thank you, everybody, for your inputs, we'll take those and, uh, we'll, uh, get back to you on that. All right. Announcements then, over to, uh, Steve.
Yep, got a few announcements for you, uh, first of which is just an update on the, um, the three to five member select board, there's been a number of questions around that lately. Uh, right now, it is still in the Senate. It is, it came out of its second reading favorably. The second reading is really just a procedural reading and all the, uh, questions and actual vote, uh, to pass it at the Senate level, um, happens at, at the third reading. So it's currently in the third reading. We actually have gone back and forth a couple of times today with, uh, the Cape State's Council and our council for clarification on the, um, special legislation that was put forth. Uh, and they're hoping to have an answer for us that will either come back to us for some wording changes. Uh, the board will have to, um, vote to adopt any of the changes or it will, you know, go through to, for a vote at the Senate. Uh, where it will either pass or fail, but passes, it will then have to go to the House. So we're looking at turnaround time of just the Senate of probably about a month. And then, uh, once it goes to the House, it's probably going to be, you know, another several months similar to the process that it went through at the Senate. But that, so that is where we are right now. Um, the, the next update I have for you, uh, is just, uh, just a little, a little background. The, the Danvers, the IT staff in Danvers started a IT collaborative a number of years ago and Wenham signed up to be one of the participants. So essentially, uh, seven communities that, um, that draw off the data center and processing abilities that come out of, um, essentially, uh, Danvers's network. And with that, it's also, if it serves as the ability to negotiate better pricing when doing larger bulk purchases, because you're, you're buying services for seven communities opposed to one. In the most recent example of that is, um, we're able to, uh, create a bulk purchase of, with a twenty-five percent discount on a comprehensive cybersecurity package. So there's really three areas that were of concern, where, where we were, um, for ransomware and loss of, uh, personal identifiable, um, information. And in FY twenty-three, BIA has new requirements for, to maintain and obtain our cybersecurity insurance. Uh, and there will be, there's expected federal security requirements that will apply to the state and local level soon. So all three of those are satisfied by this upgrade. Uh, we got a twenty-five percent discount and through, um, it really just for the uniqueness of this collaborative, and this is the first large purch- purchase. The state was, uh, impressed enough to kick in a hundred thousand dollars additionally. So it essentially discounted the entire purchase for all seven communities about sixty-eight percent. So that's really a huge win for, especially for, uh, upgrades that, that were needed, whether, whether we wanted to or not. And that the upgrade is, will, will affect all four, uh, sonic firewalls up in council on aging, the DPW building, police station, and town hall. Uh, it'll also be looking at the tunnel, information tunnel that runs between town hall and the police station. And that work will start on, uh, the fifteenth. I'm currently coordinating with our, our IT vendor and, uh, the Danvers IT staff that will be implementing the cybersecurity upgrade. And finally, I just wanted to put this out, this is a letter that, uh, Rich Souza has been distributing to residents, just in case anyone on this call is, is unaware. I felt it was, um, prudent to, you know, to just kind of echo the statement that it's starting this week, they're going to be performing extensive roadway, uh, paving activities on Patty Lane, Fisk Road, Virginia Place, and De Ambroio's Way. Uh, this will include milling and paving. They were, these roads will be reduced to, to one lane and will have, actually have limited access, um, and short delays on all access, uh, while paving. Expected construction times are seven AM to five PM, Monday through Friday. And the expected completed, uh, date of this work is the end of the month, August thirty-first. And if any questions, feel free to reach out to the DPW or give me a call and I can tell you what I know or get you over to Rich and he can fill you in on what's going on.
So Peter, Diane, do you have any questions on that, uh, cybersecurity information?
No, the only comment I would have is that, uh, um, by getting seven towns together, it sounds like a very smart way to, uh, get the most bang for your buck.
Yes, we're already saving money over trying to go alone. Diane? All right, Steve, uh.
I was on mute, I'm sorry. I did say, I did say that I thought it was a great program. Um, I think that's a great, a great start to using the, uh, collaborative.
Good start. So Steve, uh, any more announcements, water ban?
That's all I have, Steve.
So, um, on to the town administrators, uh, update them. Do you have anything further?
Oh, the, uh, that's all I have for updates. We actually, Michelle, you want to bring up the announcements? I think we skipped forward to the updates, sorry. The first one is going to be the water ban before it comes up, just, um, you know, I caught up with Eric, our, um, our water superintendent today and he, uh, he let me know that they have, I believe it was, uh, yeah, one, one fine so far and thirty-two warnings have been, uh, issued for the, the water ban. So similar to last, uh, last select board meeting a couple, couple of weeks ago, we, um, we talked about that they're going to start enforcing the water ban and generally it goes, uh, now you get, you, you get a verbal notice, then a warning, uh, and then a fine. And so we've had one fine and again thirty-two warning notices. And this will just going to continue, continue throughout the summer, um, as far as the ban is in place. Uh, and they are, um, enforcing it with fines.
Peter, Diane? No, so, um, yeah, unfortunately, we have a few that aren't cooperating, so a lot of the warnings out there. And as to say, it's a hundred dollars a day fine, so hopefully people will cooperate and get on board with the statewide efforts to address the drought. Onward, Steve.
All right, and this is, um, this is boards and committee openings, and we still have a number of openings out there. If you have any interest, um, you know, please reach out to, uh, you know, to the select board and we can get you in touch, fill you in with, uh, the meeting schedules. Uh, that's something we were going to actually update for this, this week's meeting. We'll do it for that next, next time is, uh, to give, give folks an idea on the time commitment is putting out the, uh, this, the current tentative schedule of meetings, whether it's once a month, twice a month. Uh, just to, to give folks an idea, if anybody has any questions on what getting involved with any of these committees or boards entails, the type of time commitment and things of that nature, feel, please feel free to, uh, reach out anytime.
All right, so, um, town administrators update is, uh, complete.
I already got that, sorry. Jumped the gun.
Chair's report, I just, uh, couple of opportunities for the public out there is the, uh, art grows here is underway and that goes through the fourteenth of August. So, uh, get your tour maps and, uh, go around Hamilton and Wenham and look at the, uh, cultural art, uh, items that, uh, people have, uh, put up in their yards. And second is the community houses, um, Sunday in Patton Park. I think this Sunday, the fourteenth is your last chance for this year to go out there and enjoy the music. All right, um, Peter? Any s- updates?
Nothing to, uh, report on.
All right, Diane?
Um, I actually do have something to, to mention to my, to my board and to the public that I am going to, um, have to step away from some of my liaison duties. And those are being a member of the Veterans Committee and the Master Plan Advisory Committee for, um, I believe only four months. But due to my workload at, in the office with the elections, uh, I just felt like I couldn't really give my all to all these committees at the same time. So I just kind of want to let you know, I have reached out to those committees so that they're aware and that if they need select board assistance to reach out to Steve, to either one of you guys, and I just hope that you can understand that.
All right, thank you Diane, so let's, uh, go ahead, Peter.
Diane, I'd be more than happy to, uh, attend the Veterans, um, committee meetings for four months, no problem with that, I'm already on the master plan thing, so, uh, um, we got you covered.
All right.
Great, thank you so much, I appreciate it.
Steve will make that official by vote at the, uh, put it on the agenda for next meeting then.
Yep.
We will do those assignments, all right. Thank you, Diane, all right. Consent agenda? So this is yours, Peter? You're muted. One chance.
Um, there were just a couple of, uh, minor uh, changes to this, I mean, very minor. And so I basically moved to approve the Wenham Select Board Meeting Minutes of, uh, July nineteenth, twenty-twenty-two.
Second.
Any, uh, comments, questions? If not, roll call vote? Peter?
Yes.
Diane?
Yes.
Gary, yes. So we have, uh, thankfully some more volunteers here, so, um.
So.
I believe Trudy is on the call, she wants to give some background to the.
Um, good evening, thank you, I wasn't, um, planning on speaking of this, but Julia, um, recently moved to town within the last year or so and she, as she came into register to vote, she indicated her interest in being an election officer. She's, she worked for about two years with the Boston elections. So I think she has probably quite a bit of experience, so, um, she's attended the training that I offered a couple of weeks ago, so I'm anxious to, um, have her on board and put her to work. Thank you.
Thank you, Trudy.
Trudy, your phone is brutal.
My what?
Whatever it is, it's just brutal.
Thank you. All right. Questions, Diana, Peter?
Nope, I moved to a point, I moved to a point, um, Julia Greggs as an election officer for a term beginning August ninth, twenty-twenty-two and ending June thirtieth, twenty-twenty-three.
Peter Clay seconds.
Anything further? If not, roll call vote, Peter?
Yes.
Diane?
Yes.
Gary, yes.
And I moved to, I think it's a reappointment for Asma Said to the Conservation Commission for a term beginning July first, twenty-twenty-two, ending June thirtieth, twenty-twenty-five.
Peter Clay seconds.
Any other comments? Welcome to ASMA, thank you very much. Roll call vote, Di- uh, Peter?
Yes.
Diane?
Yes.
Gary, yes. And I think that fills up the Conservation Commission, very important one to have. So Diane, I think you have this motion.
Oh, I'm sorry, I was just enjoying reading this on. Um, I moved at the Wenham Select Board, signed the primary election warrant for September sixth, twenty, twenty-twenty-two, which in case you weren't aware, is the Tuesday after Labor Day.
So everybody have to get out and vote. Many, many methods this year to vote, right, by mail and so forth.
For sure.
And all that information's available at the town clerk's office.
Peter Clay seconds.
All right, and anything else? Roll call vote, Peter?
Yes.
Diane?
Yes.
Gary, yes.
So I, I assume we have to come in for that, that's not a DocuSign, correct?
Yes. We, uh, we got parsing if we.
Okay.
Item C. So the packet, uh, we had, uh, two, uh, policies. Steve, you wanted to speak to these?
Yep, so these are two policies that, um, I felt were important, where there was some, um, you know, I could future, but there were particular around the website as to, you know, who's, who was responsible for what and who was going to update what and things, things like that. So this is just, you know, essentially it's mostly past practice, uh, but it's, it's, it's solidifying the, um, you know, it's solidifying that, you know, the departments need to update their individual, uh, in, information and things on, you know, on their so-called their tab of the website to make sure that things are, are, uh, up to date and accurate. And essentially, you know, they're the experts in the field and they know what needs to, you know, what the public should know, what they need to know, what types of applications need to be out there and things like that. And ultimately, you know, the, through the select board, uh, the, um, the responsibility then falls on me, uh, you know, to make sure that contractually we are up to date and maintain our web domain and keep the website running, uh, and, and things like that, so that we have a place to post our public meetings and disseminate information to the public. And it also goes in on to, you know, what types of links are available, both internally and externally. And, you know, needs to be a mutually agreeable relationship, if, you know, linking other departments, uh, information that they, you know, they understand that they're being linked to and that, you know, other departments are relying on that information and just to, you know, just, just a common courtesy to, you know, to just let your, let your, uh, your coworkers know, um, how that you're issuing, that they are distributing their information and how, and just so they know to keep it up to date.
Thanks, Steve.
Do you want to do it separately?
Yeah, though, well, I think we've got to have the separate votes, so we're just working separately. Any questions on this, Peter or Diane, in the packet?
I, I, I read the website policy and I thought the best part of it, about it was what, what the website could not link to externally.
Yes.
Was really good, so. Um, I also read the, uh, select board meeting prep cycle and that also looks really good, too.
So, I, I worked with the website policy a little bit with Steve, going back and forth. And one question I, that I think that we might have to bring to town council was under the disclaimer piece, where it says that, um, off the top of my head, I can't remember, I should have had it out, that the information on the website is not official, but yet it is official for us. So I thought of a way to fix that, Steve, that maybe might be easier. It's under general disclaimer.
Yep.
It's the first sentence, it says, "The information and materials contained on the town and Wenham website are compiled through a variety of sources and are subject to change without notice, may or not, may not be current and up to date and should not be considered official public records." That little statement right there makes me a little nervous because it is our official posting place for our minutes and agendas. So I thought maybe, what if we just add at the start of that one sentence, "Not all the information and materials, blah, 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 blah," are considered official public records?
She's clever.
So I thought if you did that, then we, then I feel more comfortable with it and I wouldn't say that we should run it by council.
Uh, that, if the board's on board, I'm on board. And if you're like, I, either way, I could run both scenarios by council, I, I don't mind at all. Whatever, whatever the board decides.
So I, I know that it's not, like, we didn't make this policy up, um, out of the blue and I know that other communities have ones that are very similar, but I don't know if anyone else has hit that one little line that, that doesn't jive with what I know of what our website is.
I will, I can say that it is a disclaimer that, um, you know, the MMA have distributed that policy.
Right.
Uh, it's an disclaimer that's used on, you know, on a number of websites. Uh, but to the extent that, as you suggested, that Wenham does use their website as their official posting for minutes, that, you know, maybe they're not all, makes, makes sense. I don't really think it changes the effectiveness of the clause either. So I mean, it also offers some protection.
You mean, uh, adding that not all that?
Yeah, I don't think.
I feel awesome, if you guys are good with that, that makes me feel like perfect.
All right. So, uh, Diane, you want to give us the motion on the first one then?
Sure, so I moved that the Wenham Select Board approved the Wenham website policy as slightly amended tonight, effective, uh, August ninth, two thousand twenty-two.
All right. Peter, a second? Have we lost Peter for a second there? Black and second. And we'll, uh, any further comments? Otherwise, roll call vote, Peter, you back on? I see his background, yes. So Diane, your vote?
Okay, yes, yes.
Gary, yes, so that passes. We'll, uh, see if we can get Peter back here in a second. Meanwhile, the, uh, second, uh, policy has been in, uh, in the works for a long, long time. And I think the, um, the object here is to just put down in writing what we've used as a pretty much standard practice, but does allow department heads, committees and so forth to have a document they can go to and see where the deadlines are going to be and where the process is. So it's not verbal, you know, past one person to the next, but actually we, a written document says this how it works.
And, and also, um, now from time to time, we get a backlog of, uh, of minutes to be approved, so this kind of formalizes a procedure that, you know, we're going to strive to, you know, be, um, approving the minutes, you know, at the next meeting for the meeting that immediately prior. So kind of keep that no backlog and keep it nice and clean and up to date on the website, so that, you know, the public can rely on, you know, every couple of weeks, the meeting from two weeks ago will be floated onto the website.
Questions, comments, Peter?
Uh, yeah, I'm a little behind, I owe, uh, Catherine, um, three different sets of minutes and, um, I told her I'd get it done this week.
Right. Comments, Diane, on this?
No, it sounded like Pete was in confession, but, um, no, it's okay. I think it's a great policy, again, I work back and forth with Steve a little bit and I think it just gives everybody a framework of what we've been doing. It helps the committees, the staff members, as well as the public on how to get some information to the select board in, in a meeting. So I think it's a, it's a good, good document.
All right, you want to go with the motion then, Diane?
Would like to, I moved that the Wenham Select Board approved the Wenham Select Board Meeting Preparation Cycle Policy, effective August ninth, twenty-twenty-two.
Peter Clay seconds.
Anything further? No, roll call vote, Peter?
Yes.
Diane?
Yes.
Gary, yes. Onto item D. So this is a fun one, is Natalie with us tonight by any chance?
Hi.
She is.
Yes.
All right.
Hi.
Good evening, Natalie, you want to tell us about, this is, I think, the second annual?
Absolutely, sorry, I'm trying to silence my children. Um, thank you, good evening, Natalie Bowers, Porter Street in Wenham. Um, this will be the second annual, um, Hamilton Wenham Children's Business Festival. Last year, it was part of the joint town Hamilton Wenham Fall Festival. This year, it will stand on its own. Last year, we had such a fun time with twenty-five children vendors. Um, the, the mission of it is to encourage young entrepreneurs to have a business for a day. And this year, because last year was such a success, we've extended the amount of booths from twenty-five to fifty. And what that means is that we may run out of some space, um, on the Wenham Museum front lawn. Last year, we did have a couple of tables, um, one of which was the Town of Wenham's, um, table where, where, um, most of you all, except for Selectman, uh, Clay, I think, were there. I know Gary, you were there, Diane, you were there. Um, hopefully, uh, Peter, you can come this year. Um, and, um, we had some games on the lawn. Um, this year, I, if it's okay, would love to do the same and possibly have a couple of the children tables on the booth, um, on the front lawn closest to where the Wenham Museum front lawn is.
Sounds good. Peter, Diane, any comments?
Sorry, I missed it last year, I'll try and make sure I attend this time.
Ah, I think you would love it, Pete. It's a great time.
All right, so, um. Alright, so, um.
So, I moved that the Wenham Select Board approved the use of Town Hall's front lawn by the Hamilton Wenham Children's Business Festival on September twenty-fourth, twenty twenty-two.
Peter seconds.
Anything further? Otherwise, roll call vote, Peter?
Yes.
Diane?
Yes.
Gary, yes. Thank you, Natalie, and we look forward to all our young entrepreneurs.
Thank you so much.
Onto E. So is, uh, Chief DeNapoli on or Deputy Chief Luca Tony to speak to this?
I am, Gary. Yes, I'm on.
Yes. So for the public here, we, uh, invite the chief here to give us a little back, bit of background and, uh, just recognition for, uh, some extraordinarily successful police action. So, to you, chief.
Yeah, so, um, thank you, Gary. Thank you to the board. I'm really, uh, proud to be here, uh, on behalf of uh, citizens, uh, in Wenham who reached out, uh, to thank us and two of our officers, specifically Officer O'Donnell and Officer Perez, uh, for some, uh, great police service about three weeks ago. Uh, they responded to a home in town uh, for a, a baby in distress, baby choking, a young, young baby and you know, the, the homeowner and, and the mom and dad were so moved by uh, their action and how they conducted themselves while at the call that they took it upon themselves to reach out to me via email and just wanted it acknowledged and and I felt, uh, you know, this type of setting was even more important, uh, to thank them. They, they, the biggest thing that was noticed was just how calm, uh, they, they conducted themselves during the, what can be a real scary call. And, uh, how it made them feel so safe and so at ease, uh, because of their professionalism and because of their quick response and, uh, the way they conducted themselves while, while at the call. And I think, as we all know, all too often, uh, you know, officers aren't acknowledged enough for, for what they do and, uh, they're two, two of our, our, you know, younger, uh, real uh, professional officers that myself and Deputy Luca Tony, who's also on, are very, very proud of. So just a, a quick, small token of appreciation from, from the citizens and from us, uh, you know, uh, and the administration of the PD for a job well done.
So yes, let me add my, uh, congratulations to Officer O'Donnell and Perez. Certainly, a great response and, uh, you know, typical of the Wenham Police Force of taking care of our citizens. So, um, I see, I think they're both on here. So, uh, hopefully, everybody in the public gets a view of these, uh, two great officers. Peter, Diane, anything?
I just think, uh, again, um, Officers Perez and O'Donnell are, you know, good examples of Wenham's finest.
I'll just give you a standing ovation. That was great. Thank you.
Alright.
Thank you very much.
Thanks for both of you and, uh, well done. Thank you.
Appreciate it, guys. Thank you.
Alright, so, uh, next item of business, we had, uh, talked about this, uh, setting up or revitalizing our emergency management team. And, uh, Steve, uh, has some points tonight. Do we have a separate slide or are you going to speak to this?
No, um, well, I, I sent the memo around in the packet, so that's, that's available for everybody to read, uh, that, that's at home. It's on the website. But basically, what this is, is, um, so Wenham hasn't updated their, um, emergency disaster management. So, last meeting, we established the need for an emergency disaster plan and, and, um, and, uh, the structure of the management team, that would be ideal. And, uh, you know, this is essentially an ask for the board to support some sort of stipend. To, you know, I guess, to easy to account for the massive undertaking it is for, you know, the individuals and the ma- the management team to kind of to take this off the ground, because they're essentially starting from square one. It's been over a decade since anything with the management plan has, um, has, has been done. Uh, the, I mean, the disaster management plan has been done. Uh, so we have, we're starting, you know, fresh with inventory of all our required goods and, uh, different shelters and putting, uh, emergency response plans in place and who to contact and um, the training, you know, and all the individuals have, you know, a majority of the training still left to go. It's, you know, it's really a pretty, pretty heavy lift, especially to get this off the ground and put it in, into place. So I thought the select board could maybe, uh, have some discussion around that. I provided some background in the memo and some of the, um, the police chief was kind of not to, uh, assist me with conducting a survey across the various, uh, chiefs in the area. And to the extent that they replied, I provided that information to the select board to give the range of stipends. And I, I do want to remind you that, uh, in some of those situations, there is only, uh, you know, one individual uh, managing an existing plan. We're in this situation, you have four individuals, but also, you know, essentially starting from scratch, creating a new plan. Uh, so, you know, some of those numbers are higher than others, but it's likely where they only have one individual doing it all. And we would have four.
Peter, you want to lead off on this comments or Diane?
I mean, I read everything that was sent. It seemed to make sense to me.
Um, it certainly makes sense to me. I do hesitate a little bit. I, I have concerns about, um, stipends in general. I think it, it opens up sort of a Pandora's box is my first concern. And then, um, the, the range that we have are, are, is a little bit confusing because it doesn't show you how many officers. So, you know, Uxbridge's ten thousand and Lee's seven fifty, it's hard to know how much money we're kind of talking about, but so I'm a little bit wishy-washy on it.
Right. So perhaps one thing we might consider is, you know, recognize that, you know, as Steve said, kind of starting from scratch, so that perhaps we can just, uh, ballpark, uh, figures here. I think that the, uh, it would appear that the workload for the four individuals that hold this position are going to be, uh, fairly evenly divided, I should think, over this first year as we, uh, kind of regroup and, uh, get the whole program going. So I don't think we, uh, need a widespread amongst the four. And, uh, as many things, I think, you know, the, the stipends are, are have some difficulties, but, you know, the alternative is, these are activities that really have to be manned. So otherwise, we're going to have to look at, uh, another employment position to, uh, get some of this stuff done. So I'll just, uh, put out a number here. And when, uh, so I was thinking that, uh, we have director and deputy director at perhaps a twenty-five hundred stipend and the, um, inventory and training at two thousand. And I should think we'd want to, uh, over this next year kind of track and see just how many hours this involves. And perhaps we can get to a, uh, a better refined, uh, arrangement in the following year. What do you think, Diane?
Um, like you just came up with numbers that I, I, I don't know where they came from.
Well, I took, uh, the high number of ten, uh, expecting that's the, uh, you know, single position there and kind of divided up roughly in the four ways.
Okay.
What, uh, what further, uh, information might we, uh, obtain from that survey?
So is that ten for, for one director? You know, is that what you're thinking or does Uxbridge have like five people that are on the?
The re- the response is from the police chiefs who are the director.
So that's just the director stipend. So the director saying Uxbridge gets ten thousand where Lee gets seven fifty. Okay.
Uh, you know, and from our research, it's not common that there is four individuals. So I guess that would be, I think, what Gary's logic is to dividing it up.
Um.
But with that said, it's, you know, and this being year one, it's kind of, uh, you know, a lift to get it off the ground and then maybe, you know, as Gary alluded, maybe reevaluate and, and a year or two as, you know.
Well, so once, once a stipend is given, it's hard to either remove it or reduce it.
Uh, that's fair, unless, unless it's stipulated.
Unless it's stipulated.
Ideas, Peter?
I'd stipulate it. And I'd, I'd wear it for a year or two and let's see what happens.
At that, at that cost? When you look at those numbers, is that what you come up with too?
You're muted, Peter.
I didn't do the math, um, so precisely as Gary did.
Do you have other figures in mind, Diane?
I, yeah, I'm, I'm, yeah, I'm not very good with figures. I'm just wondering size-wise, community-wise, does that come into play or I guess you have to do the same job.
Yeah.
For five thousand residents or ten thousand residents.
Yeah, I think the, uh, the plan has to, you know, obviously sized our town, but has to encompass pretty much everything that most municipalities might face. And the, uh, the training requirements, too, are pretty extensive. And I think Steve would be looking at, uh, availability of estate grants to, uh, help, uh, with the training costs.
Yeah, would be, yeah, as part of the, um, the, the team that they put together, they would be uh, actively pursuing, uh, state grants on both the inventory and equipment side and, uh, training side. So it would be an active, uh, grant management and application writing really for all areas and also assistance with actually assembling the plan itself and the document. I would be looking for grants for that as well. So it's coordinating all of that, um, you know, managing the implementation and, and, uh, and the grant writing and grant management.
So in the stipulations, we could assign something and then stipulate that after a year or two years, based on the amount of work that is required, we can look, relook at the stipend amount. Is that what we're thinking or what is acceptable?
Well, I would suggest maybe, um, you know, inventory of, you know, a generalization of how many hours were spent by the individuals and I guess, kind of as Gary mentioned it, to evaluate the, um, appropriateness of the, the stipend.
Okay. Because this is above and beyond work hours, I, I'm assuming, or during work included in their hours.
It could be a combination of both.
Okay. So I want Wenham to be on top of our emergency plan. So I, I think, I think it's important to do. So I will, um, make a motion if that's okay.
Anything else, Peter? Otherwise Diane will make a motion.
Let's go to the motion.
Uh, I move to approve um, four stipends of twenty-five hundred and two thousand, two of twenty-five hundred, two of two thousand for the four positions in our emergency disaster management team. The emergency management director, deputy director, training coordinator, inventory control specialist. I should say that again so it's clearer. I move that we approve, that the select board approve a two thousand dollar stipend for the training coordinator and inventory control specialist and twenty-five hundred for the emergency management director and deputy director to get our emergency disaster management team up and running.
So do you want to add a, uh, one-year review or stipulation?
Uh, with a stipulation of a, is a one-year going to be enough? Do you need two? You want to do one and a half? We didn't discuss that.
Uh, I suggest, uh, six thirty of, uh, twenty-four, that would be.
Twenty-four. With a stipulation of reviewing the stipend amounts, um, by June thirtieth, twenty twenty-four.
Peter seconds.
Anything further? Let's go to the vote then, Peter?
Yes.
Diane?
Yes.
Gary, yes.
Can we just ask Catherine if that made sense?
Your second motion did, Diane. Thank you.
Okay, thank you.
Very well. Onto, uh, G. I think Steve, you attended this meeting?
Yep, so we, um, we being, uh, Mr. And, uh, Ms. Ting, Gary, uh, myself, Michelle, Mike Hardy, our facilities manager, uh, attended a meeting last week. A Zoom meeting to go over the, you know, basically looking for a recommendation one way or the other from the Board of Health about resuming, uh, some level of in-person meetings. So we went over some of the details of our HVAC system here in Town Hall and some of the concerns that the board may have, the Board of Health may have. Um, and with that, we left it that, you know, Mike went and got all of the, uh, more of the technical specs for the HVAC and distributed that um, to the Board of Health members and they are going to discuss the possibility of returning to in-person meetings, or at least a recommendation for in-person meetings and what type of uh, safety measures they'd like to see put in place, things such as maybe, uh, some sort of HEPA filtration systems in the, the public meeting rooms. Uh, thing other things that were spoken about was, even a window cracked open during the meeting, three-foot minimum distancing between chairs and things of that nature. And they'll discuss that at their next meeting uh, and come out of their next meeting with a recommendation. Hopefully we'll have, um, that recommendation one way or the other for the what's the next meeting?
August twenty-third?
August twenty-third meeting. Thanks, Gary. Uh, and that's, that's where we've left that.
So that's the update. Questions, Peter or Diane?
No, thank you.
No, thank, yeah, thank you, Steve.
Alright, and this is, um, this is a review, uh, and a vote for the Assistant Town Administrator Job Description. This is a, this is a position that I believe, uh, Jackie Bresnahan held, uh, you know, prior to her departure and then after she left. Uh, she was, I believe, the special, uh, projects coordinator. And then, uh, the title was changed to, um, Assistant Town Administrator. And there was a search conducted and, um, you know, and then there was some, some personnel turnover. And so it's essentially, it's a budgeted position that was, uh, it's currently vacant and needs to be hired. So based on, I took a combination of the prior job descriptions for both the Assistant Town Administrator and, uh, the Special Projects Coordinator. I also listened to the Board of, the Select Board's, uh, workshop that took place, uh, um, Friday about, I think it was about three months ago. Or essentially what came out of that is, you know, they want, the needs for this position are, you know, in addition to the project management, they're adding the capacity to, uh, various Town Hall, um, during, diverse Town Hall departments during their busy season, uh, coordinating the annual, helping coordinate annual town report and the information flow during the budget cycle. The biggest needs that were identified in that workshop were HR and IT. Uh, due to the salary restrictions, um, and hiring range, I did not feel that we would get, uh, a qualified HR person or, uh, IT, um, of like director level or, um, you know, someone above the help desk level. So essentially, this position is will support the HR function and the IT project management. The IT, specifically, I believe, I, I was the IT director in Marblehead for almost two years. Uh, and that in, uh, collaboration with the North Shore IT Collaborative that we spoke about earlier. I believe that I have at least enough familiarity and, um, paired with the technical abilities of Colby Cousins, who's the IT director in Danvers, that, you know, has been very helpful that we can, you know, steer the community in the right direction, uh, with some assistance on the project management and, and, and contract management uh, side from this position. And additionally, as we've mentioned before, the HR needs of the town. Uh, Jamie Clone has stepped up and, uh, this, this was mentioned in prior meetings. Uh, she has, uh, shown the interest in getting more involved in the HR side of things and is starting to take some, uh, HR courses and, and accredit, and accreditations through the state, um, human resource, Massachusetts Municipal Human Resources, uh, group. And so she and myself will be primarily the professional, uh, HR guy and, you know, rely on guidance through council. And the general clerical aspects will be. Clerical aspects will be assisted through this position. Uh we felt that that was the best way to kind of, you know, free up some capacity by taking some of the day-to-day responsibilities and shifting them. Uh onto this, freeing up the capacity for both myself and Jamie to take on a um. You know, a a higher level involvement in those two areas.
Questions Peter or Diane?
Nope, makes sense.
Yeah, I looked over the job description. It's a jam-packed job description, but uh. I think it would be great if we could get somebody in there.
Yeah, certainly the a couple of broader comments is, you know, the we've gone through several iterations on job titles on this thing. But I think we're settled on Assistant Town Administrator. Uh primarily as a career recruiting tool. That, you know, that will give us a better pool of applicants. And to as in all the job descriptions, that's kind of the uh the grand wish list. Of the perfect employee, but uh we're looking for someone that has some experience and. I think more importantly, someone that this is an opportunity for someone to grow in the position and uh. Take another step in a career path.
Right, you hopefully find someone, you know, I think. Ideally, the candidate, sex the sexual candidate would be, you know, someone who has shown some commitment to an interest in local government. So possibly a recent grad, you know, their master's program. Uh that, you know, is young and kind of, you know, maybe this is the second professional experience out of out of college and they're just getting out of grad school. This would be a good development um. Position that will both help but help the town and, you know, and they can. Spend two or three years developing and honing their skills and then moving on to to another another spot. Would also take a long-term candidate, but I think.
It would be, it would be a great help for Town Hall to have another person there that can bounce through a lot of different. Assisting positions in different areas, so. So I think I'll jump to the motion.
Yes.
I move that the Wyndham Select Board approve the Assistant Town Administrator job description as presented today.
Peter Clay seconds.
Anything further? Roll call vote, Peter?
Yes.
Diane?
Yes.
Gary, yes. Alright, so uh we'll be posting that shortly then Steve.
We'll be posting that shortly. Hopefully by the week Sam will have at least on the NNA and our local website.
Sounds good. Alright, so uh this uh. Summary of special town warrant articles has several parts, so we'll let Steve talk us through each of these.
Yep, so this is uh again, this is a memo I wrote to the select board. Uh it's in the packet for anyone at home looking to. Review it, uh it is on our website with the packet that reviews tonight's material. Essentially what this is, is I just wanted to give the board the opportunity. I'll go through them, but give the board the opportunity to discuss. Ask any questions, um you know, give me any marching orders as to things they would like to see. Uh because on the next, on the the meeting on the twenty third is the night that the warrant closes. And the board will be voting. Uh which of these articles, again, this is this is a working summary. Uh it may be larger by then, but this is currently what's on the radar, what the what the asks are going to be. Of the board as far as uh warrant articles, the the articles will show up on the warrant for special town meeting. So right now we have um. I just want to see if Eric. Alright, Eric Eric Tracy, the Superintendent of Hamilton Wyndham Schools is here. So we have, I'll just go, I'll go through what. You know, essentially the the um the Hamilton Wyndham related, Hamilton Wyndham School District related articles, there's three of them. And then any questions, uh he's here to answer any questions that that the board may have. So really, it's the the first one is um it's a reauthorization of a previous appropriation of funds. So what's the what this is, a two thousand twenty annual town meeting. The town authorized two hundred fifty thousand dollars to be spent on um. Essentially researching uh the feasibility of the school, but the wording was as such that was not. Acceptable to the MSBA, the MSBA is um. Is 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 essentially a uh state agency that. Will be, will be looking for reimbursement of the cost of. Right now, our current reimbursement rate is about forty seven percent, so if you were to spend a hundred thousand dollars, the MSBA would be re. Reimbursing the communities about forty seven percent of that, a forty seven thousand dollars. So you want to be sure that any vote you take is in compliance with the wording they require to be. Eligible for the MSBA reimbursement. So this is money that's already been appropriated, it is just reauthorizing and reappropriating the two hundred fifty thousand dollars. It was appropriated in two thousand twenty to uh match the MSBA wording requirements. The second one is uh. The district is looking to establish a stabilization fund. Now let Eric um kind of fill in the details on the needs for that. And the third and and final is we'll be looking for a proposition two and a half debt exclusion for additional funds needed. For feasibility study, so the feasibility study, the the um. We need to raise an additional one million dollars between the two communities. To meet the total cost, expected cost of the feasibility study on top of the two hundred fifty that was already raised. So now these are additional funds that will be raised through a debt exclusion, so it would be borrowing money. Uh and it's in excess of um the proposition two and a half uh restrictions. It to the uh, you know, it would fall off as a debt service falls off and is not permanently built into your tax levy. Wyndham's percentage shares thirty four point six percent or three hundred forty six thousand dollars. Um and the the articles would essentially. Raise that money through through the debt exclusion. With that, I'll stop uh and let Eric jump in if he wants to add anything or. If the board has any questions for me or Eric, we can talk about those and then I'll move on to the non-school related articles.
Good evening Eric, you want to talk to us about the three articles, especially the stabilization fund?
Sure, thank you, appreciate uh you having me here, the uh. Just want to, I'll step one step back to, just want to reiterate that two hundred fifty thousand was approved in FY twenty. As part of a nine hundred fifty eight thousand dollar capital expense, so that's. That money is already sitting in an account, it's just a matter of how the uh language was worded. Uh back then, it was never specific to an MSBA project, even though it was. Kind of as a line item, this two hundred fifty thousand would be used for a future MSBA project in anticipation. Of being accepted. We didn't get accepted that year, we got accepted the following year, so. When we went back to the state, they asked us to reauthorize the use of the money in both communities, so that's the reason for that um article. Uh the second one is related to a stabilization fund and we are working to try to figure out ways to. Raise funds and um. Really pay for the the field turf project that has been swirling for years and years, so. Maybe an opportunity for us to uh take advantage of E and D. Uh over the next few years to be able to help fund some of that in this in this fund, um again. Really not uh looking at a specific target amount yet, we're just uh trying to establish the fund. So that we can um take advantage of that and use use the the monies. For that project and that that project is one of those unusual areas with the state that. Um does not get reimbursement at all, it is it is uh. Expected to be a hundred percent funded by the communities, so. Um we're just looking for strategies to raise that money, we have a, you may know, we have a turf committee uh that's going um. That represents both communities and the schools. It also is is now moving forward in the fundraising. Portion of their drive, so you'll you'll start to see members of the committee reaching out uh throughout the communities trying to raise. Uh funds to also offset costs in this this project, so the idea is just to continue to find different ways to. Fund this um. Possibly twelve million dollar project when I dead set on the the price yet, so we're still working with our. With um with our people at Gale to try to nail down the cost, but. That's about where they're at in their last estimates. And the third article is specific, specific to the actual. Uh million dollar requests of both communities, of which as as Steve outlined, three hundred forty six thousand is. Is uh want to share based on the current, most recent uh budget assessment. And that's uh again, we need the total of one point two five million to start to move fro- forward in that in that um. With that project, yeah, the the state may or may not approve it, even if we have the money, they could still say, no. You still have some more hoops to jump through, but this is one of the hoops that we need to jump through in in what they call Module One. Or Phase One of the MSBA building project for this Cutler uh Winthrop combination. And in that uh Phase One, they. There are a number of dates which I've shared uh with this committee previously and. Uh board previously, excuse me, they um. They're really specific about hitting the dates, so that when they, we get back into the spring, they'll consider us for for. Acceptance at the Module Two, which is that feasibility stage, you have to have the money in place and ready to go. To be considered for that phase, so right now we've hit all of our our deadlines. Uh we just had an Oc- uh August first deadline to to meet with some paperwork, we've submitted all of that, so we are on track. Um we'll have this October one, this would be uh if this gets approved, that would be another. Um checkbox for them and then we'd have a couple more uh reports to submit to them and then in the spring, they would review. All of our reports and the things that we've submitted, they would bring us into conference call and then they they would go back and determine whether or not to invite us into Module Two. For the feasibility study.
Questions Diane or Peter for Eric or Steve?
I had a question on the third article, then it looks like we have two motions, one that we already. Put on the ballot and one that is slightly different. Is that correct?
Yeah, well, the motion would be the town meeting motion and then the other one is the is the ballot.
Okay, because they're very similar, but. Are they, is it okay if they're not exact?
Yes, the the ballot is um I can, and I confirm this through Lock Lord, who is our. Our bond counsel that the ballot. That was illustrated in the memo is exactly what was submitted to the state and is appropriate with them.
Okay, I was confused on the motion, the article and that what's on the ballot, but I get it now, thank you.
All these have gone through the uh Regional School District uh. Council as well, is that right Eric?
Correct. Yeah, we had, yeah, we've we've actually gone back and forth with KP Law and. In Hamilton and also the state, the states were actually really specific about. What language needs to be included, they actually sent us language and said, here's what we expect to see in here. And then the uh both councils uh took a look at it, I think Steve had his as well, so. The um it's been thoroughly vetted across uh the both communities and the school department.
And I just want to further highlight that these. Although these are, you know, an attempt to to get close to final, um all the the wording for all the warrant articles, including these will. You know, will be um KP Law and Lock Lord will work together to formalize the warrant. Uh for the special town meeting, so all the all the wording will be will be correct, we're not tied to at this point, we're not tied to what's on this memo. This is just the most up-to-date versions that we have.
Anything Peter?
No, I'm good, I think Roger's got a question.
Yeah, I see Roger, so. No objections, we'll invite Roger in. Good evening, Mr. Moderator.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman. Good evening, members of the select board. I just had a quick question on this from the moderator's perspective. Uh and that is, if the ballot measure were to fail, does this article become?
Yes, I actually, I I don't want to misspeak, but I have a memo from council that addresses that exact thing that. It's actually sent a previous previous select board packet, but I can pull it out and I'll forward it to you specifically, and I think that will answer your question. I just don't want to misspeak on the technicalities.
Per- perfectly understandable, thanks Steve.
Yeah, so certainly this is one of those um. Not complicated, but perhaps uh confusing. Steps, multiple steps in this process, so we're going to have to get the good education of the public prior to going into the. Special Town Meeting, so everyone knows the importance of this and uh what the actual steps are doing. Peter or Diane, anything else for Eric?
I'm good.
Right, thank you Eric for joining us tonight.
Thank you, appreciate the opportunity.
Alright, Steve, on to uh next article then, proposed article.
Yep, so uh this one, this this next one, I'll go through, I'll start at the bottom, because they'll be uh number five on the memo. Uh is like will be accompanied by a presentation by our town clerk to read. But um so is number six is unpaid bills article, this is an article that shows up on every annual town meeting. Uh we have a number of them and, you know, the would like to get them off our books sooner rather than later, it's typically um, you know, a handful of bills. That come in after the fiscal year closes and the way MGL Finance Law is written, we're unable. To issue payment uh without. Because the books are closed without a town meetings approval. So this is, that would be, that would be number six. And there are, the details are still coming in, but Margaret um. Our our planning, our our town planner has uh some potential zoning bylaw clarification amendments. That should like to uh to put through, particularly with the uh master planning advisory board, should like to get those through sooner rather than later. And so those those could, should those will show up with more details to come on that. And with and then finally, as I mentioned, the Wyndham uh town clerk position scope and compensation review. Is something that the the town clerk uh would like the select board to uh to have a look at and she has a uh. A presentation set up for you tonight.
Very well. Diane?
Um I think you missed four though, did you want to do four before five?
Oh, I did, I'm sorry about that.
I mean, we could do it after, but.
No, no, I did miss it, my bad, good catch. Yeah, so this is a clarification of term limits for the CPC members. Uh so essentially, they are, they want to add the word at large before members, so currently it reads. Any member appointed. For two full three-year terms shall be ineligible for reappointment till after. The succeeding annual town meeting and we'll be adding the at-large. At the second after the first word of that sentence to read, any at-large member appointed for two. Full three-year term shall be on a ineligible for reappointment. Until after the next succeeding annual town meeting, but that was the uh the original intention. Of the the bylaw as drafted in two thousand sixteen, um and there's been some confusion around it, so we wanted to um. Be clear of that.
Alright, so then uh let's uh. Go to propose number five then, right Steve?
Yep.
Alright, so.
Did we want to discuss four at all? Are we discussing next time?
Well, then I think, well, I mean, if you want to have a discussion or questions that you'd like to see, because next time will be will be a vote to put it on the warrant article. Will be to put it on the warrant, we'll put that article on the warrant. For special town meeting, so this is.
This is our chance to discuss it, correct?
You can still discuss more next meeting, but just knowing that. A vote will have to take place later.
Right, so if I could jump in, I think it it. It asks for a little bit of um more clarification, so the CPC is made up of. Um so many members that are representative of other boards. I don't, I don't know the numbers off the top of my head, as well as so many at-large members. So what it seems to me is that the article is trying to limit the amount of time an at-large person. An at-large member would be eligible to serve, whereas those members that are representative of the other boards and committees. Don't have that limit.
That's correct.
So.
That is correct.
Right, so what I see is a little bit of a inequality. Um in authority or power to say in that. In that committee, if certain people can can serve over many years and many terms. And the others only have a certain amount of history on the ter- on the board. Um I don't see that as an equal. Equal. Part of representation on the committee, so I'm not sure that's exactly what what we should go for. So I'm not sure that's exactly what what we should go for, but I'm open to discuss.
So I think the history on this is that indeed, the intent was that the at-large would have the term limits, and that the select board would leave it to the individual other appointed committees to uh select their uh participants, so um you know you know, there's an argument both ways on that, but uh you know, the other committees that have representation on CPC, it's a matter for them to to uh get volunteers out of their smaller group, whereas the uh the select board is essentially picking from all town volunteers, so you know, we've uh asked this question to a previous uh town moderator who uh had the original draft and so forth, so that's uh you know, this is a practice that we have been following up to this date. It's just uh either correcting the uh the procedure to follow our ongoing practice, or to uh change the procedure itself, is this the choice?
Yeah, I ju- I guess I it seems limiting. Um I mean, it seems like it's setting a different precedent um as far as an equality of representation on that on that committee, so I guess I would like a little bit more information from the the committee itself um from the law that states about the community preservation, is it supposed to be equal representation, does does the master law tell us anything about that?
So Steve, can we get some of that uh in the the packet for the twenty-third?
Yep.
Peter, any questions? Very well, then uh let's uh go on to number five.
Thank you.
Number five is um Trudy, I believe.
I'm here, I just, I didn't know if you were gonna say anything, um can you hear me?
Yeah.
Yes, go ahead, Trudy.
I've been having technical difficulties, so so
But hold hold one second, so is uh we need to have Peter hear this. So perhaps Peter stepped away for just a minute here, why don't we just hold for a second? See, we get Peter back online.
In checking with Stuart Saginaw of the CPC Coalition in Boston, he told me he has never heard of term limits being put on the by boards who send representatives to the CPC.
Alright. Thank you, Harriet. So I've lost the picture, so Steve, is Peter back on, or?
I don't see him back yet. I return, we can jump to um contract reviews quickly.
Yeah, so and yeah, so that's uh do the easy ones, I think uh L and M, perhaps? Use the parking lot?
Okay. Miss uh Miss Naveley is 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 uh online to go into the details, but basically it is um they have a wedding uh that they will be hosting in the beginning of September, and they are hiring a valet company to park the cars for the people who will be in attendance, and um we have, I have run this by uh our uh risk analyst, that Maya for liability insurance, and they gave us some requirements that the valet company would need to uh pro- uh provide to show us that the town was the co-insured uh on on a liability um in insurance document, and that we met uh you know, certain uh liability requirements as far as payouts for for various incidents. Uh and they, you know, they complied with that, um it has been reviewed by Maya, and they, you know, they feel that 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 covers the town. Uh if the board was was to allow them to use the iron rail parking lot as it says, from four P M to ten P M on one twenty Grapevine Road um or for one twenty Grapevine, over about thirty-five to forty cars uh for that, for that, just that one, you one uh evening uh and night.
Questions, Diane?
Well, I had a question, it but Steve answered it, I thought it was for the wedding reception itself and was getting concerned about other things, but it's just the cars and the people are being shuttled to another location for a really fun ceremony, so that that seems really perfect to me.
That correct, Leslie, that it's actually gonna be a shuttle to another offsite?
Um yes, they're gonna be dropped at the house, and then the cars will be brought down and parked in that iron rail parking lot. Um so the valets will be shuttling back and forth, but yes, it's only to use to park the cars.
Alright, thank you.
Thank you.
Additionally, I did uh coordinate with the Iron Rail Committee, and they are fine with that if the select board is.
I don't think so, I think I moved that the Wenham Select Board approved the use of the iron rail parking lot for cars as presented on September third, twenty twenty-two.
Peter, seconds.
Alright, Peter.
Oh, Peter's back.
So
Oh.
Seconds and uh roll call vote? Peter?
Yes.
Diane?
Yes.
Gary, yes. Alright, so uh
Thank you very much.
Have a great wedding.
Thank you, thank you, Steve.
Yep.
Let's uh cycle back then to uh Article Five, then, Steve?
Yep, go back to Article Five, so again, Article Five on the summary um memo for potential special time meeting art warrant articles is a uh the uh the our town clerk has would like to um uh present a compensation review uh for for her position, she's a as I unless you're not aware that it is she's an elected official for the town and um any any adjustments to the compensation would have to go through a town meeting or special town meeting.
As I understand the uh there'd be different votes depending whether it goes to a special or an annual, is that right, Steve?
Yes, yeah, my understanding is it's a two-thirds voted a special time meeting and simple majority at a uh annual town meeting.
Alright, so uh shall we invite Trudy in to uh run us through these slides, please?
Alright, thank you, um I'm assuming you can hear me, I just don't have video tonight, but you'll be looking at the slides anyways, you don't need to look at me. Um good evening, I'm Trudy Reed at fifty-three Topsfield Road, Town Clerk and Chief Election Officer. I come before you this evening to provide an overview of the increased responsibilities of the Town Clerk's Office and to provide a compensation overview of our town and surrounding communities and to get your support for placing an article on the warrant for the upcoming upcoming special town meeting that will request an increase in the town clerk's salary. Um if we could go to slide one, please? Thank you, so slide one, many of you have seen over the last couple of months because of our redistricting. So as you know, we've been split into a a one precinct and sub precinct. So this is gonna require a separate management of the election programs of two formats. We'll be able to have a single ballot for the local election and two separate ballots for the state election. So this um process is being put into play as we speak for the primary that's coming up in September. So basically, for the primary, we'll have precinct one and precinct um sub precinct one A, this also requires a additional work on the on the street list and getting the voters list ready. Slide two, please? And again, you've seen this before, so I just wanted to just refresh your memory of what happened with the redistricting and our new voting precincts. And um this is going to affect, I just said, um the primary as well as the November election. If we could go to three, please? So just to give you a little bit of background information, the Massachusetts House and Senate recently passed the Votes Act with election law changes that have made pandemic-related voting expansions permanent and forever change the job of the town clerk. Elections now require an expanded amount of coverage by the town clerk's office. The Vote Acts also changed the last day of voter registration from twenty days to ten days. What this means is that we are now going to be required to be open on a Saturday until five P M for last day voter registration. Governor Baker also signed a bill that set the date for the state primary to be on Tuesday, September sixth is the day after Labor Day. Which this now means it's a town clerk's office may be required to work additional hours over the holiday weekend. So a little bit of background on early voting in two thousand sixteen was the introduction of early voting, um two thousand eighteen, the state added um suggested weekends. Twenty twenty, it was mandated that weekends um would be required depending on the size of the town. So it's one weekend for the state primary and two weekends for the presidential election, and because of the Votes Act, it has now been made permanent for one week one week of early voting to include a weekend, and two weeks for the November election to include two weekends. So this now requires us to manage an additional staff workers and early voting for these weeks during town hall hours and weekends. Slide four, please? So this just gives you an idea of what requires for the both in-person early voting and the vote by mail, because it is here to stay. Providing voters with more options is good, but the impact in the clerk town clerk's office was not considered. In some larger communities, they have already created separate election offices to handle the workload. In-person voting requires six days, including the Saturday which also includes um updating the voter list on a daily basis, preparing for the next day, getting the ballots ready. As one clerk recently said clerks used to plan for two election days, one primary and one election day. But now we must plan and run for twenty election days, including the regular election days themselves, which always turns out to be a sixteen-hour day. The vote by mail is now permanent, in this chart, you can see um the the chart at the top sort of tells you what we used to do, and then now what's gonna be mandated. Um the pinkish charts shows it used to be like three steps, and now we're required to do twelve steps um during this process. Exhausting workload increases the clerks is substantial, and the costs are unavoidable. I hope you can appreciate how much goes into planning for elections. We never know what the turnout of voters will be, so we always plan for a hundred percent turnout. I could see slide five. So they just, in addition to the elections, this is just some other duties that we are required to do, we're listed, town clerks are listed in over two hundred and fifty master and laws, which include vitals, planning, zoning, state ethics, campaign finance, record keeping in addition to elections. Campaign finances, most of you know, is annually for local elections, state elect- state ethics and open um meeting law requirements is annually and every two years. The record keeping is ongoing, which includes vital boards, committee minutes, annual census, street listings and the annual reports, and I'm also the Public Records Access Officer for the Town Hall. The role of the town clerk has changed since I started in twenty ten, and more recently, um it has done a a more of a change um over the last year with this Votes Act. Next slide, please? So this is just some um accreditations and affiliations that I've that I participate in. Um I am a certified Massman Esable Clerk, and in order to obtain this certification um there's a requirement to attend classes, a test is also involved, and to keep the recertification up involves um attending the classes that the M T C A offers um three times a year. Yes, this is above and beyond what I do, but a lot of these classes and the mentoring helps me to keep up to date on um what is involved in the town clerk's office. Other duties, it's outside of a normal job of the town clerk is that I process the Pleasant Pond stickers, I process the D P W electronic recycling stickers. Um when we had lack of staff last fall, I stepped up and started posting the board and committee minutes to the website. And I'm also the Public Rex- Records Access Officer for the Town Hall. Next, please? So you will see that um I did a recent survey of the annual of the area town clerks, including some cohort communities to Wenham. Note that a couple of the communities, including Hamilton and Middleton um they recently addressed the change scope in the office, and their salary has increased dramatically over the last six months to a year. If you'll you'll see that the Wenham Town Clerk is at the lower end of the spectrum. Based on the expanded scope of the office in the area salary view, should you agree to put this on the warrant article? I respectfully request forty-three dollars an hour up from my thirty-seven sixteen presently. Slide eight, please, um and just as a rough figure, I also um with the help of the Finance Department, I put together some numbers of department heads. This is just their base pay, and as you can clearly see, I'm one of the lower-paid department heads um on the spectrum here. So even with the requested increase that I have just mentioned, the town clerk's salary will still be appropriate in relation to the other department heads in town. So it should not affect the other positions. So thank you for your consideration to have this as a warrant article on the special town meeting. Are there any questions?
Peter?
Nope.
Diane?
Um, no. I I I think that we've never done it this way, but I I have noticed that other elected clerks do a, they have their own article on an annual town meeting.
If I say something, Master and Law does require that there's a separate warrant article, you're right, we have never done this before.
Right.
But in doing some research of the Master and Laws and in talking with Steve um this would have to be a warrant article on a town meeting, whether it's special or annual.
Right.
Actually, all elected officials' salaries, if they get any any elected official that gets a salary, should be done separately at the on the town meeting warrant.
Right, when we do, when we do the budget, so that's what I was thinking this, you know, we we should probably do something like that in that on an annual basis in the annual town meeting.
And I know in my prior uh experience that there has been separate warrant articles specifically for elected officials um to set both the, you know, to, you know, essentially to tie them to the personnel bylaws and set their salary and things, um and it's it's a annual vote that takes place uh every year. And standard wording with the adjustment generally around the compensation piece.
So we really need to uh correct our past practices, and for these elective positions be more definitive on uh salary, uh vacation, and all the other terms. Is that uh what the typical warrant article would cover?
My experience, yes.
It's my experience that it just covers compensation, elected positions do not accrue vacation. So the articles that I've looked over over the last six months typically just discusses compensation.
So I guess my 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 gut would be, I'd like to work on that for the annual town meeting. If we do something now that and increase things, I I don't know where that money is gonna come from cuz we're already have our budget set.
Um Diane, if I just might add, I I um believe that um there's been some other salary increases that was done after the budget had been set. And the stipends, it was just, you know, will be approved, that's outside of the budget as well, that was approved on meeting.
Comments, Peter?
I don't know, what what Trudy's saying is true. We have approved stuff since the budget was set.
Right. The um
If I might add, my other option, if you don't approve to put this on the special town meeting um there are other options available to me.
What does that mean?
It would be, it would be a citizen's petition that I would, if I chose to go that route, that would be another option.
So as a practical matter.
Ideally, I'd love to have your support.
As a practical matter, are we going to be able to draft our own article and get it reviewed in the next two weeks?
Are you talking about as a citizen's petition or?
Well, either way, you know, because we're starting from, you know, the language on this has to be a
Yeah, I mean, I don't think, I don't think that, and I don't think that that's impossible.
Right.
I, you know, I said, there's a number of communities that take separate votes, likely would be worded very similar.
Another question, so we have the classification study underway. Does that include the elected offices?
It does include the town clerk and I also included the sorry, the assessors, the new, the principal of the shared service assessor, even though it's technically a a Hamilton position, but we wanted to, you know, at least gauge the marketability of the, of the salary.
If I could just add to that, typically Master General Law 41108A identifies that elected positions are not part of any job classification rating or salary structure.
Because they're usually separate, right? Going back to just the other money that we, we, we did for raises and or stipends, they were also assigned based on new, new responsibilities that were given. And I'm not saying that the responsibilities of the town clerk's office are not new, are not old, because there are new stuff for sure. But that was the, I think, the basis of the other money that we spent outside the budget.
Yeah, but Diane, I think that the point that Trudy would make is that because of all these changes, the fact that we split the town into two voting districts and all these extra days that she's got to like organize, that, that in fact her job had the amount of effort that she has to put in has gone up.
Yep.
It's changed.
So I guess have several steps here. We have to, as the select board, and first I say thank you, Trudy, for your presentation here. All right, so amongst the select board then, we have to determine, one, whether we want to form an article for the special time meeting. And the second would have to come to agreement on the actual money figure or change there and consider the I guess, quick question to Steve. This could come up repeatedly, so a failure at the special time meeting because the two-thirds majority would not preclude a repeat at the annual town meeting?
I do not believe so, but I can confirm.
So I guess the, the first stage is Diane, you seem to think this, go with the annual.
That would be my, I, I think so, but I can be flexible as well.
Peter, any preference or indication here?
So the annual steps is like next spring?
Yes, it'll be April 1st.
So I would shoot for special.
So if we go with a special, then the questions then become at what level? And at what starting point does this initiate at? What date? What would you go for, Peter?
I, I think I'd like to go back and, and spend some time looking at the numbers.
Right.
And come back with a recommendation, if that's okay with you, working with Steve and Trudy.
All right.
For September meeting? Or?
Well, see, that's the other problem. We have a deadline here. If we're going to do this, everything has to be done. Including a town council review by our next meeting, the 23rd, as the war closes.
You know, I believe I could build some flexibility in to, right, because you could have a blank for the compensation, so that could, you know, buy you guys a couple of weeks and then any other thing you'd like to see in there, we can build some flexibility as to the start date retro and actual dollar amount that would have to be raised, whether we're raising it through free cash or, you know, this would, I think, any, any financial article will have to go through the finance committee.
Right.
Putting the debt exclusion and all of that, they gotta get their recommendation and see whether they want to fund it through raising through free cash or some sort of a emergency fund transfer or something like that.
So Steve, why don't you and I sit down? I mean, we've got the information that Trudy put together.
Yep.
And why don't you and I try and figure out before the 23rd, what that might look like and come back with a recommendation on the 23rd?
Sounds good to me.
Is that okay with you, Diane?
Yes.
Yep.
Yep.
My concern has been that, you know, the we are both responding to market forces as we've hired in other people. And we have the classification study that should be able to help us pinpoint the recommended salary range. So, you know, I'm a if we can do it and come to an agreement, then we'd have to make the multiple decisions on the 23rd with the review by town council already complete. Otherwise, I think, you know, given that this is an elected position and the candidate ran for the position at a salary, that, you know, perhaps this could just as well roll to the annual time meeting as well. So I think, are we in agreement that we'll take a shot at putting together an article for the 23rd?
Yep.
Yes.
Yes.
All right. Very well, then let's if, Steve, you got the direction from us then, that
Yep, looks like Trudy has, just so, just so you're aware, Trudy, I believe.
Thank you. I just wanted to remind you that the 23rd or whatever that date is, is simply you're closing the warrant. You don't have to have all of the writing and the wording approved by then, because usually
That's understood, but
Okay, okay.
Trying to get things organized and for once, get things done in time. So I want to hold to a strong 23rd deadline to get the special time meeting organized. All right, so Steve, you got that one and perhaps you can give us a interim email update next week or something?
Sure.
All right. Very well, then that, I think concludes item I, is that right, Steve?
Say that again.
This is progress.
Item I, the review of the possible articles.
Oh, yeah, right. That concludes item I, yes.
So let me ask one quick question there. Have we heard anything further about citizens petitions?
Well, there was initially an inquiry about the process around, I believe it was plastic bags. And Trudy had, I was CC'd on the email, given them all the, all the information. And that is the last, unless Trudy has heard anything further, I believe that's the last we've heard from that party.
All right.
That's the only one that I'm, I'm aware of at this time.
All right, thank you. All right, so let me see, we've got I, so let's go right on to Jay.
Yep.
So I'm sorry.
Go ahead, Diane.
So the deadline for a citizen's petition is after we want to close the, the warrant?
No, the citizen petition also has to be in on the 23rd before the warrant closes.
Okay, I'm sorry. My brain went, okay.
All right, so asphalt. What do we know, Steve?
So we got, I believe these are, these are the two contracts that we procured through the state procurement law and this is for Bitcon and for roadway paving services and K is the contract for Allied paving corp for the, to, for completion of our ADA ramps and sidewalks. The Bitcom one is for essentially just a per ton, I believe it was 8275 per ton of essentially asphalt and the Allied Paving Corporation is for actual services for doing the ramps and the sidewalks. These are generally annual contracts. They're procured very similarly every year. They've been, the process was overseen by me and in order to, to clients 30B. And Rich has reviewed all the bids and put forth the winning, the winning bids and put the contracts together that are before you tonight.
Peter, Diane, any questions on this first one?
Nope.
Is this for specific work, like the work that, all those road closures, or is this just to have them on retainer when we need paving?
No, this, I believe this is for the material for the, including these road closures and all the paving that's going to be done through the rest of the summer into, into the fall.
Okay. Looks great to me.
A very long contract, right? Forty-five chapters, whatever it was. All right, so if nothing else, let's go with a motion, Diane.
I move that the Wyndham Select Board approve the Bitcon Corporation contract for roadway paving services effective August 9, 2022 through June 30, 2023.
Peter, seconds.
Anything else? Roll call vote, Peter?
Yep.
Diane?
Yes.
Gary, yes. All right, and K is similar. Do you want to do that one, Diane?
Yeah. Yes. I have a question afterwards. I move that the Wyndham Select Board approve the Allied Paving Services Corporation contract for ADA ramps and sidewalks effective August 9, 2022 through June 30, 2023.
Peter, seconds.
And a question there, Diane?
So my question is, is this really something that we, we need to to review a, a contract for paving that has been vetted by our DPW and town administrator? Is that something we could give to them directly?
I mean, currently you do need to review it because the select board is the signing authority, but that is something that, you know, you could designate, you know, at any level of the organization, either myself or Rich to sign on, you know, be the signing authority on contracts like this, but that would be, currently you need to review them.
Okay, so I guess my question is, once we get through all this, that maybe we could talk about something like that, because to be honest, the, the contract is, it's not that interesting and I didn't really read it totally carefully. I listened to what Rich said and, and what Steve said, and I thought maybe that could just be something that they could take care of.
I would foresee too, I think Rich is going to be on next select board meeting to discuss the entire paving plan for the town. So perhaps next year we'll combine this up perhaps and that both the select board and the public will get a look at the paving plan and as well as go with the approval of the contracts, or as you say, we could designate that to a lower level.
I mean, I, I don't want to say that we don't want to be aware, but it would be nice if we could, I think, give, give them some more responsibility or final action in that, something to talk about.
Anything, Peter?
Nope.
So we've had the motion. Do we have a second?
Yep, Peter, seconds.
And then a roll call vote then, Peter?
Yes.
Diane?
Yes.
Gary, yes. All right, so K, we've done L, so we just need to go to M.
So this is this is a request for a one day clarification. It's not a liquor license, it's a wine and malt or beer and wine license. So on the, on the agenda, it just says liquor license, so just for clarification on that, it's for malt and wine only. It's for a wedding at the Wyndham Country Club on August 22nd. Their application is submitted and complete for review for the select board.
So we've seen all the paperwork back up through the packet. Any other questions, Peter or Diane?
Nope.
So I move that the Wyndham Select Board approve the one day. Do we call it a liquor license or?
Malt and wine only.
Malt and wine or liquor license, malt and wine only at the Wyndham Country Club on August 27, 2022.
Peter, seconds.
Anything further? Roll call, Peter?
Yeah.
Diane?
Yes.
Gary, yes.
Marvellous.
All right. So I think that covers the full agenda as published. And then upcoming events, we have a select board meeting on 23 August, which appears to be going to be fairly busy. And then we push the, the next one back one day. So Labor Day is the 5th and we'll have the select board meeting on the 7th of September.
We will vote on the 6th.
Yes. Got the election on the 6th too, so everyone get out and vote. Right, so open to any additional agenda items. So we have, I know we've got a couple of presentations coming up, so the 23rd, we're going to hear from the DPW paving plan. I think the 7th September COA will be coming in with a dementia-friendly town briefing. And anything else, Steve? We got got to finish up the open session on the DPW contract, right? We're looking at 7 September for that one?
Yes, right. Well, yes, that's, that's the aim. I can't promise, but that is, we're aiming for that.
Right.
If not that, then the one, the one after.
Very well.
Still look at the schedule, see if we're missing anything else.
The magic board in the spare room there lists everything.
Yeah, and also on the, the 7th, we're aiming to have on the September 7th meeting, we're aiming to have a a, a budget cycle memo for review of the select board for distribution to the departments. And I will also coordinate with the finance committee on that as well.
All right.
Can't believe it's budget cycling again.
Yes.
I know.
So Peter, any other agenda items you'd like to see coming up?
No.
Diane?
No, I think we're covering everything.
All right, so a moment before, we had a couple of questions from, in the public comment period tonight. I think those will be addressed, one at least over the next couple of days here. And the other will probably come back on the 23rd or 7th September as far as our, because we got some other ideas to consider after our tour.
Yep.
All right, Steve, anything else?
That is all I have for everybody this evening.
Catherine, are we good with the, the minutes?
Yes, thank you.
All right, thank you. And Michelle, as always, thank you for organizing everything. All right then. Peter, you got the motion?
Sure, with nothing further left to discuss, I move that we adjourn the August 9, 2022, select board meeting at 8:21.
Second.
All the favor of Peter?
Yes.
Diane?
Yes.
Gary, yes. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thanks, everybody.